So I'm gonna ask each of them to just kind of give a background about themselves and then we'll take some questions from everybody.
Okay, my name's Melissa Crowley. I grew up here in Tonganoxie, moved away for a little bit when my eldest daughter started school. We moved back for the schools. My family's here. So I've got four kids. I've got kids in every single school. And I just do not agree with what is going on in our schools right now. I feel like it should be the parents' choice to make any kind of medical decisions for their kid. And there seems to be a gap between the board and the parents. You know, you question anything that they're doing or saying and you don't get a response. I just, you know, I want to do what's right for the kids and their future, you know? So I'm just taking a step out in faith and, you know, what do I got to lose? So that's why I'm here.
I'm Naomi Vaughn. I've been in Tonganoxie since 2004. I'm a single parent. I have four children. Three of them, well, two of them now school age. One of them is currently going to Tonganoxie. I've owned my own business for 37 of the 38 years that I've done what I've done. I'm a freelance court reporter. And I wanted to run for school board because I was greatly concerned with some of the things. My son was coming home telling me about things that were going on at school, as well as, you know, with COVID, the masks, and where all of that is gonna lead. And also with the new school building and I think we kind of need to watch our spending. Because when you look at the budgets, you wonder why there's a $4 million increase in spending over an eight-year period of time.
Okay, anybody have questions?
Yes.
John?
For both of you. You go first. Where do you stand on the aspect of CRT being taught or not taught in our school systems?
Definitely it should not be taught. And that was part of my concern. My son came home last year with some stories about things that were happening in school that teachers were, in a sense, promoting CRT.
I feel like we are in the beginning stages of it. At the last school board meeting, she was talking about Panorama, this social emotional screener that they're giving to the kids. And I had emails back and forth, you know, I had heard people saying that this was critical race theory. That they were gonna, they ask them questions about, you know, are you sad today? Are you happy today? And then they take the data and then they're gonna use it to bring in critical race theory. You know, of course, she assured me that that's not what it was, but I just feel like it is. That, who was it? Merritt Garland, the Attorney General?
His son-in-law.
His son-in-law, yes, owns the Panorama company.
Yes.
So it all, yeah.
That's what I was asking too.
Yeah, I feel like it is. She told me that the data stays with us and that they don't give the data out. But, you know, I just have a hard time believing it.
Okay, I have a follow-up question for both of you. What are you gonna do to stop it?
Well, I'm not sure other than I think, for example, at me as a parent, if I had a complaint against what the teacher was teaching in school, I would bring it to the higher-ups, the superintendent, the school board. And if there is not a curriculum to teach this, then that teacher needs to be told to stop or there would be consequences. That's the way I would, I do it. That it has to be something that's mandated, in a sense, by the school board. If that's not your curriculum, you shouldn't be teaching it.
That's right.
Yep.
So the assistant, the superintendent, she told me that this screener was required by, they were required to do it in order for the school to be accredited. So I don't know if that's true or not. So is it something that the board can do or is it, you know, the state that's directing that?
Well, now, some of the required courses come down as an approval from our state.
Yes.
School of Education. So let's say that they said, okay, we kind of like CRT. What would you do to oppose them in your local school system? Or would you be able to, as a member of the school board?
So I asked her if there was an opt-out option, you know, can I opt out of this survey? And she said, I don't believe so because it's required.
And you?
Well, I think if the state came out with a mandate that we have to teach CRT in the school, I think we'd see a whole bunch of upset parents. And I think then it would be up to each individual school district as to whether they decide they want to do that. And that decision would lay with the board. I wouldn't vote for it. I can't guarantee what other members of the board would do, you know, if you're outnumbered. All you can do is vote against it.
Exactly.
Thank you. Go.
Other questions? Mike?
I attended the Kansas Association of Counties meeting this week. And we just with another county commissioner and another nearby county, it was by Sabatha. And he informed us that their health director has a different set of requirements than the health director here in Leavenworth County as far as the quarantine requirements and what the schools are doing. And as far as when you're on the board, what, I understand the board has a lot of authority to make those decisions. I know Newton has actually put masks optional in their district. And even though their health officer, you know, recommended, they went against that recommendation and said, no, we're gonna make it optional because we're taking into account the psychological effects on the children of the masking. When you're on the board, will you take into account the psychological impact of long-term community masking on our children?
Definitely. I don't think it's a good thing.
Absolutely. There was a guy nurse that went to those Freedom meetings and that was his concern, was them wearing them for eight hours a day, the effects that it's having on them, you know?
Well, and it's not the kids that are, that are just going to school for eight hours. The kids that ride a bus are wearing them even longer. For example, my son would get on the bus at 6:30 in the morning. They have to wear the mask on the bus. The only time the mask comes off is when they get off the bus, walking to the building, and then the mask goes back on. And then they have to ride the mask or use the mask again when they get back on the bus in the afternoon. So some of those kids are in masks for 12 to 14 hours a day. And I don't think that's a good thing at all emotionally, mentally. It makes you, you become impersonal with that mask on. I mean, how many people do you know, you go in the grocery store when the mask mandate was in full force? I would sometimes recognize somebody that was in a mask. When I'd say hi, they wouldn't recognize me. You don't see the facial expressions. You don't see any of that. And I think that that's very important for kids, for socialization, to learn to interact with people, to communicate with people.
And, okay, the question that I have is, have you talked to any medical personnel, doctors, nurses, regarding, like you said, having the mask on seven, you know, seven plus hours all day long? I have been, you know, commenting that I've worked in the medical field and to wear a mask for more than 45 minutes to an hour is recommended that you get rid of that mask, that it is now contaminated from, you know, whatever you touch going to the mask all day long. And I've seen kids come into a practice that I was with, you know, where they have these filthy little masks on, where they've been touching them, and then that's all considered cross-contamination too, all day long. So it's like, you know, have we talked to, you might reach out, talk to some professionals regarding the mask mandate and how long you should wear one? And if so, does your school district want to pay for the mask actually being changed out every 45 minutes to an hour per student? Are they up for that? Because really, it is a respiratory concern and for other people that have asthma, children that have asthma, it is a health concern. Is your school district willing to take that into consideration? So my question is, you know, or maybe have you reached out to talk to any, has anybody talked to any professionals regarding, yeah, the COVID and the mask situation? And it even says it on the box. It is stated directly on the box that these need to be changed out after 45 minutes.
Well, I don't think our district would be willing to foot the bill for those, all those masks because at least this, earlier this year when they instituted the mask, if the elementary and the middle school students showed up without a mask, they were charging them a dollar. And if the kid didn't have a dollar, they had to wait until the parent showed up or the parent came to pick them up.
Well, I consider that if it's a mask mandate, then they need to be the one taking care of that charge.
I agree. I agree. And my understanding is they receive federal funds for COVID stuff, that they should not be charging for the mask, that that's what those funds are for.
Was that just in the elementary and the middle?
That's my understanding. My son's in high school says, no, they, I mean, they just call the parent or tell the kid they have to leave. You get a mask, you leave. There was nothing about a dollar.
So they weren't offering them masks?
No, they were, they were not offering, well, if you bought one, you got a mask.
Oh, so in the high school, they were also charging?
My understanding is no, because.
They weren't even making them available, is what you're saying?
Right.
Well, in our school district, I've been told they were given two masks for the school year. So that's what they were providing, or two masks for the entire school year. So I just want to know if our district is willing to take care of these students in a proper way, since we are all concerned about self-confidence?
I, I found a doctor in Shapika. She was a holistic Indian. And she's very concerned about the way the schools are handling COVID and putting masks on the kids. So I was able to get a medical exemption for the mask. So my kids are probably the only ones that don't have it. Yeah, she's very concerned about it.
I have two questions for you and just, the first one is, would you be willing to forfeit federal funding in order to gain more control over decisions made through your home rule authority? One, and the second one is, what are your plans to improve test scores? Because we know they've declined over the course of the last year, specifically preparing students for a career path or even graduation, college ready or career path. So what are your plans to do that? And would you be willing to forfeit federal money to, in your district?
Absolutely. I don't think there's any amount of money that they could give to, for the mask to be okay, you know? The testing, to get the test, I feel like that's across the nation. All the kids are doing, you know, is it the curriculum? I know that, like, my kids, the common core math, they, they do not, it's hard for them to do. The, what was the other question?
The forfeiting, so you answered that one. So just preparing them for graduation or career path, pretty test scores, basically?
I think they need another counselor at the high school in order, you know, I talked to my nephews and one graduated from Tonga, one graduated from Basra. And I said, the one that graduated from Basra, I said, what was the, what was the difference? You know, and he said, we really had a counselor that, you know, really worked with us and said, where do you want to be? And like, these are the steps that you need to take to get there, you know? And that didn't happen in Tonga. More information about the vocational schools, you know?
Do you think that your, the budget would allow for that? Another FTE or, or, if you know what I'm saying? Would you, have you looked at the budget yet for your school district and would you be able to maneuver something like that?
Well, I only glanced at some surface numbers. I haven't seen the entire budget, like, where every line item is going. But I just saw the numbers, yeah, I know. I just saw the numbers and the increase in spending over the last eight to 10 years. And I'm thinking, well, you know, we went from a budget of a million and something to now we're up over $5 million. Where's all that money going and what's it being spent on? I mean, I know we have a new building, but my understanding is that's a bond issue, so that's not coming out of the school budget.
Have you looked at special education?
I'm sorry?
Have you looked at special education in that budget?
I can't imagine that $4 million of it goes to special education and a million goes to regular education. But no, I haven't, I mean, I haven't gotten the budget to look at. At this point, I'm not on the board. As far as the test scores and getting those up, as a parent, I think they put too much emphasis on electives. And you have to have all these electives. And I think that elective time, in a sense, can be more geared towards helping kids improve with, you know, the basics, reading, writing, math. And/or, at least when they get into high school, I'll give you an example, my son, he loves to do stuff with his hands. He likes to do woodworking. Well, they don't offer woodworking. They offer residential carpentry. So he spends his time in a classroom, learning about board feet, square feet, you know, things like that. And yeah, those are good math skills, but he wants to actually make things in like a shop. But he has to wait till almost the end of the two semesters before they even get to that point. So I know in other countries, for example, when they get to high school, they can more focus their elective times on things that they might be interested in, in a career path or a trade. And you maybe use some of that time to go out and shadow people, maybe do some mentoring within the community. Those are, those are ideas or thoughts that I have.
Those are great ideas, actually. I like, thank you.
Anybody else?
I know curriculum, from what we understand, is actually purchased from several different companies. And I've been told that it's very difficult to get in and really research what's in the curriculum. But if you do get elected, will you commit that you will help to get a parent committee together and really go through that entire curriculum on every grade level? And look to see if, you know, are we getting articles from Marxist scholars? Are we getting articles from, from, what are our kids being asked to read that's inside of this computer? You know, they have it on their iPads if the parents can access it. And it would be nice to have a list or where we can look and see what all is being fed into the minds of our children.
No, I have no problem with that. I would be happy to do that. Because I, to me, it's strange, the kids no longer have textbooks. There's absolutely no textbooks. So even when they're off and they're homesick or whatever, they have to be on their computer to do their lessons or to even look anything up. And I just think, well, can they go back and, and, you know, like, when I went to school, we had textbooks. So if I needed to refresh myself on something, I just went back a few chapters and reread it. I don't even know if they can do that when they're on the computer.
We were told in our district that there's a shortage of textbooks, which is very odd to me because I would, I mean, I know that it probably costs some money to print or, you know, the production of or whatever. But the iPads that are provided does cost money also. So that's one thing we were made aware of. But we were also made aware of some specific books. One of them, not really in Lansing School District, but in Leavenworth, is a required reading book that, and I don't have the title of it, but I'll get it to you though. But it is actually pornography that's being read. It's a required reading for 10th graders. And it has depictions of homosexual relationships. One of the school board members from up there read it to me and said, should I expose it? I'm like, yes, you need to, because parents don't realize that that is actually a required reading. And you don't know until you're able to do an audit. In the school board, I don't think that they have the time to audit everything that's coming across the table to approve. But it may be worth having someone come in or auditing.
Yeah, I think, I think Mike's thought of a parent committee that reviews that kind of thing would be an awesome thing to have. So you can dig down deeper into what is actually within the curriculum.
Did she bring that up to the board, the book?
She's going to bring that up to the board, but she has not, her, she's been like most parents, they're, they've been rejected or.
I think I've seen a video on YouTube, Facebook, you know, it's out there. Another parent at a school board meeting with a book, and I'm sure it's probably the same book. And she was talking about its teaching, it's basically pornography for high schoolers.
If you are elected, will you commit that you will, at the board meetings, treat the parents respectfully? Because I watched some of the board meetings and I've seen how the parents have been treated, and it's appalling.
I think the parents should have a voice, period. I think if the parents want to say something, that they should be allowed to say something, period. If they have a question for the board member, I think the board is obligated to answer their question. Not ignore them, not say, it's not your time to talk, we're not taking questions. I think the parents should be treated with respect. I think they should be heard. They're the ones that elect us.
Absolutely. So how, how do you plan to engage the parents? I don't see our current school board even caring and engaging with the parents. I mean, I'm not always there. I mean, do you plan on making trips around town or? I thought about going to Chieftain Park. You know, we were having those Freedom meetings every Thursday at 6 o'clock. We could continue doing that, you know, and post it, make it public, if anybody has any concerns or questions or, you know?
Well, I wouldn't ignore their emails and not answer them. I at least answer emails, phone calls.
Would you consider putting a meeting, making a public notice that you would like to put a committee together involving all investors, which would be not only your parents, but your taxpayers, your grandparents, your retired teachers? Anybody in the community that would like to have their voice heard? Would you consider putting a meeting, making it well-known that you're open to putting these meetings together?
Yes, absolutely.
I think if you form the committee like what you talked about, it would be good because there's, you get four board members, it's a quorum, and then there's the Open Meetings Act and everything that's part of that.
Well, both of you as, as parents with children in the schools, have you ever heard of any of the current school board asking parents to come to any kind of coordinated meeting to? I know they, they did this mask mandate through the middle of the night, you know, for two days after they started school. And then they wouldn't even plan a special school board. Have they tried to reach out to anybody and coordinate any kind of meeting that you know of?
No, my understanding is most of the people that have emailed the board members haven't gotten a response back. If they email a board member and ask a question, there's, there's a couple of board members that will respond to some of the emails. But my understanding from these other parents and other people that have emailed, some of them aren't even parents or just taxpayers, that they're not getting a response back from the school board. We got no response when we asked for a special meeting. We were told there was no reason to have a special meeting and ignore. The only opportunity that the parents were given is you get the public comment, period, and you get, you're limited to three minutes and you're cut off. But if there was, a parent had a question about something the board was discussing, they weren't allowed to ask questions, they weren't allowed to speak, they were totally ignored in some instances, actually.
Does your community have a, like, a digital board, announcement board to where it talks about events that are coming up? I think for like school board, you know, announcing that there, you know, there's a school board meeting this evening, all parents and taxpayers, I mean, I think we put it out there. You know, do they have something like that available? I mean, do you have some type of board that announces what's going on?
I know they have it on the district website.
What, the website, yeah.
You know, when the meetings are, but there's no announcement.
Like at the bank?
Yeah, Lansing, at Lansing, at the Community Center, the police station, the city hall, they actually have a digital board and so it'll bring up events that are actually.
We said with the bank.
I don't think they want that. I know.
But they only announce them if someone has them, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know some of the banks have that, but I don't know that they announce like school board meetings or anything like that.
Whoever goes into banks anymore.
Drive, it's just drive by own. It's on the outside.
Yeah, they have them on the outside.
Like a digital marquee board is what you're talking about.
You know, a lot of boys now, the imbalance between boys and girls going to colleges, so imbalance, a lot more girls are going to college close to the boys. And looking at technical education and hands-on things at the schools are involved in. What's Tonganoxie offer in that area?
I don't know that they offer anything. I mean, they have, like I said, my son's taken residential carpentry. It used to be, and I think they stopped doing this several years ago, it used to be that class actually built a home every year and then they sold the home.
Oh, nice.
Basra did that.
But that's, my understanding is that has stopped several years ago, that they no longer do that.
Is that a funding issue or?
I don't know. I don't look into it.
That sounds like a good thing.
Yeah, but you know, there's other, there's others, like welding. I don't know that they even offer welding. And I think, you know, some of these kids can do some of this stuff even outside of the high school as classes, college credit or technical, to take some of the classes that way and get some of those skills before they even graduate.
Do they promote at Tonganoxie High School the options of going to KCK Community College VOTEC? Johnson County has even expanded their VOTEC. They used to be more of a college prep college, but they've expanded into a lot of VOTEC-type.
My experience with the kids that have been in high school, my kids that have been in high school, the experience is, here's what's available. If you're interested, sign up. That's, I think that a lot of.
That's all the promotion they're doing.
Right. I think a lot of that is one-on-one counseling and having maybe another counselor in a school, sitting down and talking to kids. For example, I emailed the school counselor here a while back. I'm a, I'm a court reporter. It's a dying profession. We are shorthanded nationwide. We desperately need court reporters. And they're offering free introduction classes, like learn how to write on the machine. It's like a six-week class. I've taught the class before. And it gets kids or people, anybody who might be interested in the profession, gives them an idea of what the profession is, and it's a free program. I emailed the school counselor and said, hey, you've got juniors and seniors that might be looking for a profession. It doesn't have to be just women. There are men in our profession as well. But they can spend one night a week for a couple hours. They get a stem machine to play on, you know, they learn the theory, they learn how to write on it in this six-week period of time, to give them an idea for another career. And it's a very well-paying career. And I got no response. So I, two or three weeks later, I emailed her and said, hey, did you get my email about the A to Z program and the court reporting and I'd love to come and talk to the students? And, and you could literally have juniors taking night classes and graduate high school and go out as a court reporter, be certified as a court reporter by the time they graduate high school. There are counties in the United States paying $100,000 starting salary. And literally come out of school making $60,000 to $100,000. You know, here it is, I'd love to come and talk to the students, no response. Three weeks later, I said. Three weeks later, I said, you know, I haven't heard anything, did you get my email? And the response was, oh, yeah, I, I let the students know.
Well, I bet she didn't, because if she'd let you come talk, I bet a lot of those seniors would be going, I'll take a hundred thousand dollars a year.
So, yeah, I think that there's, there is not a lot of necessarily encouragement or follow-through.
So as a board member, what would you, what would you do to bridge that gap? Would you, you know, make, make it more wearable for the, you know?
I feel like they need to take a test that says, you know, a lot of them don't even know what they want to do or what they're even good at, you know? Yeah, take a test that tells them that they're good at this, they're good at that, or you know, this is the school that you can go to to do, to do that.
Well, how do you feel about, there was some talk about getting rid of the SAT scores? Have you, I don't know if you.
I've heard that.
Yes. SAT, yeah, the SAT.
And that, that is supposedly marks your, I mean, I remember taking it in high school. That supposedly marks your college readiness, your ability, colleges look at it. I don't know, because I, I haven't looked at ACT or SAT for so long, I don't know what's on.
They're declining over the last ten years and probably nationwide. Specifically in the state of Kansas, over a 10-year span, it's been this steady and then a decline. Some say it's because of COVID, I disagree. I think it is because they've, really with the core curriculum, when they started bringing that into play, it's confusing to the children and it's confusing to the parents who have to help with homework and then not having a counselor to assist with other things or even teachers that are overloaded with too many students in the classroom. There's a lot of factors that's behind that, but the point is, is we're dumbing down this next generation, period.
It's called indoctrination.
And everybody gets a trophy.
One issue that's come up is, like, I'm a history major. And when you have people go back and read history, they read Thomas Jefferson, he has beautiful handwriting. And you'll see John Adams, beautiful handwriting. And if you're reading history, you need to understand how to read the written English language. And our schools, according to what I've been told, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're not teaching our children how to write.
None of my kids know how to write.
And I think that is a problem. For, for even to read history, if you don't know how to write in cursive, you aren't going to be reading in cursive very well. So I think this is a real issue that, and where do you stand on that?
Well, I think they should be taught cursive. My kids can't even read my notes to them. I write in cursive. They didn't learn cursive, only my oldest one did, and after that, they stopped teaching cursive. The, the only thing they know how to do is sign their name in cursive.
I think it's a problem.
I, I.
I agree.
Will you repeat what you said, Mike?
I said, none of my kids know how to write cursive.
Yeah.
I have a freshman, eighth grader and a fifth grader.
So they could read the Constitution if they wanted to?
Exactly. The eighth grader actually brought it up to her history teacher and said, how are we going to be able to read the Constitution if I can't read cursive?
So we mentioned that in a forum in a couple of things. And we were called liars and said that we were gaslighting and we were bringing up those political buzzwords. And so by you saying this, and this is going to be published, it is proof in the pudding that students, because we talked to several voters who, they're like, my daughter or my son can't even write cursive. And I mean, I don't have kids in, in school.
My three younger ones can't. They can't, they can't even read the birthday cards from grandma and grandpa because they write them in cursive. And so I have to read them to them.
Are they really educated?
And it makes you wonder if they actually can run by a clock? Or is everything so digital now with the iPads and the phones and watches and everything? Are we, are we even able to tell time, let alone write in cursive?
I personally have hand clocks in my house for that reason. I taught my kids how to do hand clocks. And that's all I have in my house, other than, you know, their phone or whatever.
Randy, you have a question?
When I was in school, and I know it was quite a few years after, it was true. They always had what they call the Iowa Basic Skills Test. I mean, and they were nationwide, does, do they even do that anymore? Have they eliminated that?
I think they've eliminated it.
That's so stupid.
I think they do the MAP, these MAP tests, MAP. But I'm not sure.
Because those Iowa Basic Skills Tests were just, they were fantastic.
I think the MAP is similar to the Iowa Basic Skills, but it's, that's not what it's called, but I know what you're talking about.
But is it as good as those were?
I, I don't know. I don't, I don't get to take the test.
Because that, that was a good indication of, of the education that you were getting in your school. Where are you going?
Yeah, they, they do it every year and then they set aside like two to three years where, you know, one day's reading and writing and one day's math.
Yeah, they were geared to the age limit.
Yeah, at the beginning of the school, I don't, they don't do it for high school, I don't believe. They close, it's all grade school and, or elementary and middle school. And then every year when you go in for parent-teacher conference, they show you, well, this was, this is where your kid was last year, this is where they are this year. And hopefully the score keeps going up instead of dropping down. But they do something similar.
In Lansing Middle School, they are asking students what their preferred pronouns are. And parents had no idea that this was going on. I don't think that that is appropriate for any teacher to be doing that. That's not education, that's indoctrination. But do you know if they are doing that here?
I haven't heard that they were, my son was in middle school last year and he's, didn't mention that. He did mention that there are maybe one or two wannabe transgender students, you know, there. He's not sure what they want to be kind of thing. But I don't, he never, he's never come home and said, well, the teacher's asking all of us, do you want to be, I don't want to be referred to him, her, he, they, she, we.
And how do you feel about that? That, like, I guess you said earlier, that, that is really not their position to be doing that.
No, I, I mean, if you've got a child that wants to be transgender, that to me is the business of the parents and the child. It should not be forced upon others in the school. If that child wants to be referred to as something other than the gender he or she is, that again, to me, is up to the parent and the child. I, I definitely have an issue with the transgender sports thing, letting boys play in girls' sports or vice versa. I think you play whatever sport your biological gender is.
You are aware of what happened in two schools in Loudoun County, Virginia, with transgender.
Right, right, right.
And I have a question. Are you aware that in the middle school, the school approved two or three years ago, a gay straight club?
No.
What was it called?
A gay straight club.
The school board approved it?
Yes.
The school board?
And the school board.
No.
At the middle school?
At the middle school.
But they don't have a heterosexual club, do they?
Or a little.
I haven't heard about that.
Yeah.
But it is a gay, called a gay straight club.
Did they define that?
Yes.
What, do we know what the definition is? Is it written somewhere?
I don't know. There was a, a child told me in the school that they have, and their school approved it.
I think you guys have some homework to do to find all these things out.
Well, and you know, I think that you hear stories, but I'm wondering, do those stories ever get to the school board? If they get to them, are they being ignored?
Well, it's a club approved by the school.
Yeah, it has to be approved by the board.
Yeah, it has to be approved by the board or it's not considered official. We have one that was not approved by the board in Lansing Middle School, which seems to be the target age that they're trying to start the indoctrination. A club that was not approved whatsoever, but they're calling it a ninth hour and it includes CRT with the curriculum or the literature that they're providing for that. I would highly recommend you both maybe go on, because that should be public record for you to be able to go. There's specific books and we can give those to you to look for that we found. And sure enough, a ninth hour unapproved club or group, the board never approved that's going on. However, the parents did give the students permission to participate. So with that being said, the parents gave them permission, but it's still an unapproved club. Which in my opinion, if a teacher is promoting that to do a club, it should be approved by the board. Or shouldn't it be approved by the school?
Well, if they can do that, then why can't they bring their Bible to school and have a group for that?
Yeah.
You know?
The teacher's sponsor.
Yes.
Yeah, if it's not approved, it shouldn't be happening at school.
I have a question too. The drug problem in Tonganoxi. We've had three deaths, they weren't school-age kids, but I've heard of drugs, both in the middle school and in the high school. And I realize this is nationwide, this is not just Tonganoxi. I've talked to Chief Lawson. I am going to assist him. He's put on a form already at the high school, we're going to do it at the middle school. What is your thoughts on where a school board should stand on drug-related issues within the school?
They should have an assembly or something to.
That, that's what it was called, an assembly at the high school, they're going to do the same at the middle.
Like a couple nights ago, I talked to both of my kids about it, you know, and said, if there's anything going around, you know, don't take it, kids are dying, you know, and they're like, okay. So I was just going to talk to your kids and educate them about it.
What, what's your thoughts on the school helping educate? And especially if there's the law enforcement aspect of it.
Well, I'm all for that. They used to do the DARE program, but my understanding is they got, they done, they did away with the DARE program.
Probably lack of funds for something important like that.
They haven't done the DARE program for a long time. But I know that they have, like at least in the middle school, you know, an officer that kind of comes through every now and then. And, you know, years past when my kids were there, they would tell me about kids whose lockers were searched because another kid ratted them out because they had something they weren't supposed to have, kind of thing. The drug problems, yeah, it's a, it's a major problem working in the courts, it's everywhere. And, you know, I don't know what the answer is to that, other than you just have to educate your kids. You know, kids are always looking for a thrill, whether it's drinking, marijuana. You know, they're looking for that next big thrill and that's a large part of the problem. And then you also have parents who are doing drugs that these kids see their parents doing it and think that it's, oh, it's okay because mom and dad are doing it. It's just like parents who are alcoholics, the kids grow up thinking that's normal.
Dysfunctional families, right? And, and it could be a coping mechanism for, for these kids. So that's where, you know, some counseling will come in, that would be helpful.
Or the church.
Or the church.
And that's another reason to have a parent taxpayer committee.
Yeah.
That's in charge of letting the community know that there's these things going on. I mean, just like tonight, I mean, how many concerned parents have you seen and heard? Where are they? Where were they at the VFW? I mean, you guys as candidates, you got to commit to being that school board person.
Yeah, I'm surprised there's not more fifteen.
And you know, with our open borders, with the administration, the Biden administration that we have now, with the open borders, you know, I just heard on the news that the fentanyl death rate in from fourteen to twenty-four years is up by forty-plus percent. So it's like, get ready, because we are being invaded in our country by illegal immigrants that are, you know, drug smugglers, the cartel, human trafficking. So we're, these kids and parents are going to be facing a lot more. And I think our schools and our, our board members need to be prepared for this. We're going to have a lot more of that going on because they're spreading these people throughout the, throughout the country. And we're seeing that in Lansing and some of our low-income housing apartment dwellings. So it's like, get ready and, and think about how we're going to get prepared to handle this. So what do we need to do to address this issue?
Just say no, right? I mean, I remember, I remember going to school.
I, I think, yeah, we need to be out there in full force, you know? And again, you know, that's getting, getting our people in the, in the community involved, you know? Let's start raising, let's start raising some hack and talking about this.
Well, and we, and we gotta, we gotta let our kids know too, that it's okay to let somebody know if they see that going on within school areas. The kid's got to be okay with, feeling okay with telling.
Right. But, and so much of that is just peer pressure.
You know, and Marla, like she just said, aren't the schools supposed to be focusing on education? And then when these things come in, then.
I think our, they should be able to provide outsourcing or direction for these society problems.
And I think our, I think our teachers are a little bit overwhelmed with the curriculums or being forced to like CRT, that there are teachers out there that don't have a voice or scared to say anything because they might be a little bit outnumbered by the higher apps that are forcing the CRT issue, critical race theory curriculum due to more federal funding that each school will, if they will push this grid on, you're going to get more federal funding.
So the union. How do you feel about school-based clinics and school nurses? In some cases, they do referrals for abortions or they distribute contraceptives without the parents knowing it. How do you feel about those kind of things happening through the schools?
Should not be happening at the school.
Well, you, I, I agree, it should not be happening at school. Although I can say that anybody thirteen and up can go to Planned Parenthood with, and get services without a parent's permission.
That's sad.
Would, would you commit that we won't have Planned Parenthood coming into our schools?
Yeah, I would commit that we don't have Planned Parenthood coming to our schools.
Okay, well, it's getting close to eight o'clock and I told the, the owner we'd be out of here just after eight. So if anybody else has any questions, now's the time. Bill, come on, you came, you have a question for our ladies up here?
Oh, sure, you're picking on me. Well, someone asked about the achievement levels, because they've been on a flat line since seventy-three, as I understand it. So I don't know how you fix that. But, yeah, and, and the drug and apparently porn is in families now. The more I read about porn, it's an epidemic level. And I, I know you guys can fix everything, but there's a lot of concerns out here.
I think a lot is common sense and your values, your morals and where you stand spiritually.
As a family.
As a family or what you support. And that's why some of it, we see what we see nowadays.
So if you ladies either wanted to get elected and the Elephant Club would be so desirous to send you to a conservative organization, would they do training for school, new school board members, would you be willing to attend?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mike, for offering that.
And I want to thank Gary Grimes for taking our ladies around every Saturday. They've been hitting it hard and. And Matt, the first mailer?
And it should be, it's in the mail.
I haven't seen mine. I thought so, good luck, okay. Okay, it's, it's, it's in the mail and then the second one goes out when? Second one goes out. It's going out tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, so who are they? When should we get it in, and when should we get it next week?
Okay, okay, great. And thank you, Matt, for doing that. And thank you all for coming tonight. We got to get the word out, if anybody needs a sign for one of our, for our candidates up here, there's three signs there.